Good evening.
Good evening.
Good afternoon, I'm sorry. It is now four o'clock. I'd like to call the work session to order. I would like for Ms. Russell to give us the list of the pledge.
You want Ms. Russell to do what?
Ms. Russell.
You want me to start the pledge?
Yes, please.
I'm sorry, I didn't understand what you're saying.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Make the seat up. Our vision, every student will reach his or her full potential, prepared to thrive in a changing world. Our mission, we empower every student every day. That shouldn't be before that time, but now I'm going to turn it over to community and community, communication and community reflection, Dr. Winborn, share with us the status of that.
Yes, Dr. Lindsay, Madam Chair, Board members. I regret that we will be postponing this presentation this evening. We had a conflict with schedules and I wanted to make sure that all of our students were here. I didn't want any of them to miss this. And so we have rescheduled the senior reflections for the class of 2025 to the June 2 regular meeting. And I will, of course, work with the chairwoman to see if it's more convenient to do that at, say, 5:30 prior to the regular meeting, which is consistent with what we've done in past years. But details about that will be forthcoming. And again, I apologize for the last-minute adjustment, but I don't think it'll be any less special when we have it in two weeks.
Thanks.
So, thank you for your understanding in that.
Thank you. I want to step back up to one item that I missed on the order of this agenda. Mona Salzberg, let's go back and do that and head on to the next item on the agenda. Thank you. We're going to move now to number three, academic success. That's what Ms. Angela Salzberg.
Good afternoon, Dr. Lindsay, school board members, Dr. Winborn. I'm here this evening to present to you some information about our CTE federal application. Our amazing CTE program has 20 career pathways, 26 outstanding teachers, five support staff, and in the year 2324, our students competed at the state, regional, state, national, and international levels and earned over 4,000 industry-recognized credentials. Since I'm coming this evening to ask you to approve our federal CTE application that is full of lots of data and goals and strategies and action steps, I thought, why not present to you the outcomes? The federal government measures our success of our program on eight indicators. And I know that this slide is hard to see. I'm going to go over all of them in just a minute. But what I want you to see about this slide is the background color of each indicator. Green means Granville County Public Schools met the benchmark. Pink means we didn't quite make it. But out of eight areas, this past year, we were successful. This is the data from 2324. They still have not finalized the 20, obviously, the 2425 data. So, we were successful in six out of eight. In the previous year, it was only four out of eight. So, we did make improvements. Next slide. So, these three indicators, the first thing I need you to be sure you understand is that all of these measures are only based on concentrators. We don't get to count any data from students who have not completed a second-level course in a specific pathway. Okay? So, first of all, they have to be a concentrator. But after they are a concentrator, we had more than 95% students who graduated as a concentrator in four years, and we had more than 95% of our students, when surveyed six months after their graduation, they have a positive placement. They are enrolled, enlisted, or employed. Okay? 95% of our CTE concentrators. For us, one measurement is that we are encouraging students to explore non-traditional roles. For instance, women in the pathway of construction. And so, 35% of our concentrators, and we did meet that benchmark. Next slide.
Ms. Salzberg, can I ask a quick question? Say again what a concentrator is, because those people that may be listening or watching, just go walk. It's not taking just two classes.
Absolutely. It is not taking just two classes. It is that students have explored various pathways. Maybe they took animal science, health science I, and business management. And now they've decided, oh, I really liked the business management. I want to take business management II. And that makes them a concentrator in a pathway. So, they've gone that extra step to get more in-depth in a career pathway.
So, why is it, why do you think students that go on to take a second-level course are more successful generally by these measures?
I believe that these students have taken an opportunity to do some career surveying and talking with professionals in many, many areas, and they found something that hooked them in. They found something, hey, I could see myself doing that in the future. And so, they've gone that next step. And frankly, I think they are more likely to be six. The data shows, the data shows that those who are CTE concentrators are successful. We survey them. We find them and ask them, what are you doing six months after graduation? And 95% of our students have a positive placement. And the state requires that we find at least 75% of those students, and Granville County Schools always finds 90%, of those students, so that we can get true data. And we are really, really trying to encourage that every student becomes a concentrator, because the proof is in the data, that you are more successful if you'll take that next step.
Ms. Salzberg, when you say find them, you said in the follow-up to see how they go into those career pathways that study in school. That's what you're saying, find them?
Yes, ma'am. The state sends us the list. These were the students who were your concentrators in that graduate cohort, and our teachers, you know, take phone numbers and parent emails, and we really do try to find them wherever they are, graduated, and find out what they're doing now.
Okay, thank you.
Sometimes it takes finding a cousin who's still enrolled with us here and getting a contact for that young person from them, but we are very successful at doing that.
Good, thank you.
And I do appreciate the hard work that teachers put into making sure that we find all those students. The next set of three indicators are based on our end-of-course tests for English, math, and science. We were, we had, we doubled our performance in both English and math in the previous year. We didn't quite make our benchmark for math and science, but that's part of our plan, is strategies for working with students on their math and science skills, so that we can meet those benchmarks. Oh, go back one more. I'm sorry. I did want to make sure that our board and the public understands that for these three indicators, first, they have to be a CTE concentrator. But second, the federal government only gives us credit for career and college-ready students. So, that Level III proficiency does not count for CTE data. Only Fours and Fives count for CTE data. So, I just wanted to point that out.
Thank you.
And finally, our CTE proofs of learning. Again, it is the percent of CTE concentrators, but 69% of our concentrators earned a credential, and 71% of our concentrators were successful in the area of their state assessment or performance-based measure. So, we are really proud of those increases, too. And some of our goals in this plan were very specifically related to increasing the state assessment and performance-based measure proficiency, and we did that. So, we are, this is the second year of a two-year plan, so we look forward to making more gains. Next slide. So, our recommendation is that the board approve the fiscal year 2026 CTE local application.
Got a motion, please, from the board?
I move that we approve the 2026 CT application.
Second.
It's been motioned by Ms. Russell, second by Mrs. Baker, that we approve the CTE application for the 26, 25, 26 school year. Heard for question, honest favor, aye?
Aye.
And opposed, ayes have it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Salzberg, thank you so much for your leadership. I mean, by every measure, it seems this program is thriving and improving. So, thank you. Thank you to all of our CT teachers, everyone who's working hard to support this program.
Yes, thank you so much for your support.
Thank you. All right, Ms. Hines, fiscal responsibility.
Good evening, board members. Tonight, we bring to you, refresh your memory to just a couple of weeks ago, when you approved the policy related to board member compensation, related to the technology reimbursement. The policy states that the amount of the supplement will be established by the board annually and included in the budget. And this is our opportunity to do that. Based on the work that we've done, recognizing the cost of the district cell phones and the just prevailing cost of internet, we are recommending a $150 per month supplement for board members for related technology costs. And this comes to the board for your approval. This is for the remainder, May and June of this fiscal year, as well as 2526, so we don't have to come back to you next year for this. Do you have any questions about this?
Do we need to waive the second read, since this is a policy update?
Were you adding it to the policy, or just make, setting the rate for this year?
Setting the rate for this year, actually.
So, I think not, if you're not changing the policy, could the board just vote each year?
Has this only gone for first read?
Has the policy been approved?
It has been approved.
Yes, I think that last line in Part III is what we're addressing.
Right. Just want to double check?
Yeah.
No question, clarification? Not really a motion on the floor?
Yes, I make a motion that the technology expenses, they're cited under item number three, be approved.
I second.
It's been motioned by Mrs. Russell, I mean, Mrs. Emerson, second by Mrs. Russell, that we will approve the technology expense for $150 per month, starting immediately. Heard for question? Honest favor, aye?
Aye.
Out of opposed, ayes have it.
Thank you.
I want to pause right now to recognize our county commissioners who are here and the audience here. Thank y'all for coming. Mr. Russ, is that Russ May?
Yes, Commissioner May, Chairman Gooch, and Commissioner Williford.
Yeah, right. Thank y'all for being here. Please engage in conversation.
So, Madam Chair, Board members, I'd like to invite Mr. Graham Lewis up to the podium. And commissioners, if you'd like to get a little closer, feel free. I know that this is a work session, so we would invite you to ask any questions you may have after the presentation. I know Mr. Lewis is going to open up the floor to everyone. Yeah, we can slide some chairs up to these tables, too.
Thank y'all. Please join us. Mr. Williford, please join the table.
Mr. Gooch, come on down.
Yeah, Mr. Gooch.
All right.
Okay, thank you. Sir, please go ahead.
Yeah, good afternoon. Really appreciate the opportunity to present to you all today. I wanted to start off with a little bit of background on our program and what's been done so far in Granville County Public Schools. So, we've had many meetings with administration. I've brought an engineer out with me, and we've toured through all of the schools. And we've also completed a utility analysis to see how you're operating compared to other school districts in the state. And so, there's really two goals for today's presentation. The first one is to review with you all at a high level what we think a performance contracting project could look like for the school district. And then our second goal is to get the board's support to move into the RFP process for a program like this. So, as it was mentioned, if y'all have any questions, it is a work session. I mean, feel free to jump right in with any questions as we go along. I want to make sure not to leave anyone behind, because this presentation definitely builds on itself. So, starting off, I wanted to give a quick overview of what performance contracting is. So, this is a program that is enabled in state legislation. So, there's specific law that has been enabled that allows local and state government to take advantage of this performance contracting program, and it's overseen by the State Energy Office and the State Treasurers Office. What it does is it allows companies like mine that are pre-certified in North Carolina to guarantee utility savings and operation savings, which the school district can then use retroactively to pay for a project. There's two keys to the legislation. The first one is, when I say guaranteed savings, if we say that the school district is going to save $400,000 a year, and for one of those years, you only save $300,000, we have to actually write you a check for $100,000 to cover the difference. So, the savings are guaranteed, and that is in state law. The second thing is that the project has to pay for itself, less any rebates or state and federal incentives. And so, this is why school districts, other local government, use this program to get a large infusion of capital investment in their facilities to address deferred maintenance projects without having to impact local taxpayers. And so, flipping to the next slide, project priorities and goals. What we wanted to start off doing was, you know, what are the overall themes if someone in the community were to ask you, hey, why is this something that the school district is looking into? There's really four key reasons why. The first one is addressing major facility needs. So, you'll see, once we get into the report, there are a number of what I would call big-ticket facility needs across the school district that y'all are just, you know, given current capital constraints, like every school district in the entire state faces, it's difficult to be able to find the funding to proactively replace. The second one is that you'll see y'all are right in the middle in terms of compared to other school districts in your operations costs, and so there's opportunity to drive savings and improve from a fiscal responsibility perspective with taxpayer dollars. The third one is, this is a program where you have one partner. So, you have one partner that does the design, the installation, and then measures and verifies the performance of the project in the backend. And so, we really want to bring more expertise to the school district. As you have upcoming retirements from your HVAC staff, we want to be able to help fill in any gaps that might remain. And then we also will work to maximize hub participation through any subcontractors that are used. And then finally, we want to make sure, these are typically large projects, multimillion-dollar investments in the learning environment. We're doing things around sustainability and energy efficiency, and we want to make sure we don't lose this as an opportunity to connect with the students. And so, I've actually got a couple of pictures over there on the left side. We sponsored some Earth Week activities over at Butler STEM Middle School, and this is an example of the different STEM opportunities that we can bring into the classroom. So, the top picture, we did solar samours. We actually created those solar ovens out of pizza boxes with the students, and they were able to cook samours using solar energy. And then down on the bottom, we had solar bugs. So, you can, those are small solar panels on top of the bugs that the students created and then went out in the sun, and they buzz around and dance around. So, lots of different things that we can do for school districts, and I'll talk about some examples here in a second. But the reason this is on 11 by 17 paper is because of our energy conservation measure matrix. So, I'm not going to go point by point, line item by line item on this, but at a high level, right, we've got all of the different sites across the top, and then on the left side, all of the different opportunities that we've seen at your school district, either that are going to drive energy savings or our operational needs and in things that your maintenance staff's identified as being at the end of its useful life. And so, what we've done is we've color-coded which things we think will be able to fit into a project and which need more investigation. So, anything that's got a green dot is a no-brainer, right? Those are energy conservation measures that are going to drive a lot more savings than they cost. They're going to drive extra savings that we can put towards some of those big-ticket capital needs. Think of things like chillers and boilers and big HVAC projects. Yep.
Graham, didn't mean to cut you so short there, but this same question popped in my head. When I'm looking at this chart, the second row is an acronym, BAS. Can you help everyone with that real quick?
Yeah, that's Building Automation System. Good call there. So, building automation systems are automation systems that tie all your thermostats together across the school district, and the folks who own the main office are able to standardize temperatures and scheduling to make sure that equipment isn't running 24/7 and that, you know, temperatures are uncomfortable in the classroom. Great question.
And they can also, like, look at them on a computer from a central location. They don't have to go to the school, right?
Exactly right. Yep, exactly right. And so, yeah, so any of the yellow dots are things that either just barely pay for themselves or we think are a large priority that we think would fit within a current project. And then lastly, the black dots are things that need further investigation. Either they take a really long time to develop to make sure that they would be the right solution for the district, or they have a really long payback, and the district would have to prioritize those items above others. And so, what I'm going to do is, over the next few slides, just kind of talk through some key ones that stand out. So, we'll start off with the building automation system. Right now, you have a number of different building automation systems across your schools. You can see examples of those over here in the pictures on the right. And then, really, there's a wide variety based on, as the systems have been in place, both functionality and then things get out of whack over time when they're not able to be upgraded or proactively replaced. And so, there's a few things we're recommending in terms of building automation. The first one is for all of the sites to do optimization. So, what that is, is it's just standardizing your cooling and heating set points and your scheduling on all of your equipment across the district. That's something that really helps to drive a lot of energy savings for school systems. The second thing, though, is you guys are trying to standardize on one specific brand of your building automation system, which is called Envirecon. And so, we've identified four schools that are not currently on the Envirecon system that we would implement a brand-new building automation system and help to standardize for your maintenance staffs, because right now, they've got multiple computers and logins, and it's a mess to be able to manage all of those different programs. So, that's going to be our approach from a building automation system side. On the next slide, LED lighting, this is another no-brainer, right? You guys have done a good job of slowly transitioning to LED lighting as it fails or, you know, if you have a small renovation at a group of classrooms. But this is taking a comprehensive approach at replacing every single interior light over to LED, that's not already existing LED, and then also all of your exterior lighting to LED. So, one fail-swoop, get it all done across the entire district, help to standardize your stock in your maintenance department, so they're not having to stock a bunch of different light bulbs. And then our lighting solutions come with a 10-year warranty. So, hopefully, that'll save a lot of time in your maintenance department from having to change out light bulbs. They can focus on some of those bigger equipment-type repairs.
Graham, what is the little meter at the bottom? Exactly, what does that mean?
Yeah, so that's your payback. So, anything that's in green, it coordinates with that ECM matrix that we had a couple slides ago. Anything that's in green, it is driving savings for the project. It's going to pay for itself, and it's going to have a lot of excess savings that you can apply towards those HVAC needs or other needs that have long-term paybacks. Yep. So, on the next slide, we've got some electrical upgrades that have been identified. So, there are a couple of sites where you've got Federal Pacific panels where you can't get parts, because Federal Pacific has been out of business for a number of years. Or you've got some 1960s switchgear from Square D, which is a company that Schneider Electric owns, that obviously needs replacing from a resiliency standpoint for the school district. There's also a number of transformers that are 25-plus years old and can be upgraded with more efficient transformers. There's a picture of one over on the right there from Oxford Web that I think is 50 to 60 years old. So, certainly a big need here to be able to improve resiliency, so that if these systems were to fail, you know, you would obviously be out of school for quite some time, as there's a long lead time on electrical equipment these days. So, we want to try and get that replaced proactively versus reactively. Well, the next slide is really focused on mechanical systems and HVAC. Oh, yep.
So, I just wanted to be clear. The schools that are highlighted at the bottom in yellow, that means that they're...
So, that means that those are the schools that would be getting these improvements. A majority of those schools are just the electrical transformers, so you can always double back, and it'll be on that ECM matrix.
Okay.
But yeah, so electrical transformers are a majority of that scope of work, and then replacing electrical panels was identified at Oxford Web and at South Granville.
Okay. Thank you.
Good question. So, mechanical upgrades, these are a lot of those big-ticket items I talked about, where they have a longer-term payback, but they're really important. If you have a couple of them fail, it takes a big hit on your maintenance budget. And so, we want to try and address as many of these for the school district as possible. The first couple are related to using fuel oil. So, there, you have Stovall Shaw, which still uses fuel oil, right now, our thought, and a couple other sites as well that still use fuel oil. But the idea is, let's convert you to propane at those sites. There may be one that we can convert to natural gas, but we'll evaluate at all three sites and see what can be done. We have had some success running natural gas lines out to schools to help drive cost savings. The second thing is, there are these 1975 wings. You can see a picture, that bottom-left picture is an example. These wings are existing both at West Oxford and Stovall Shaw. Essentially, you have one HVAC unit that's 50 years old that serves a multitude of classrooms there. And so, obviously, you've got one side of the building that's sunny, one side of the building doesn't get any sun, you have one thermostat and one unit. There are folks that are going to be uncomfortable with that type of arrangement. And so, our recommendation here is, you can see, there's actually two doors to each classroom. One of them is a sliding glass door on the left side that your maintenance department has just a really difficult time with repairs. It's $1,000 plus, and they're having to repair several of those a year. And so, our thought is, we can go in with a barred HVAC unit, which y'all see a lot in eastern North Carolina, is a very common HVAC-type system, where each individual classroom will have its own unit and thermostat. And so, everyone's going to be able to really control the temperatures in their classroom to a much better standard than that current one unit serving a ton of classrooms. So, that's something we're really excited about.
So, what does the gray, you explain the black and the yellow?
Yep, yeah. So, gray means that it's not applicable, those schools are not applicable on this slide. The black, going back to your ECM matrix, are things that either need to be prioritized later on as being included in a project, or we just need further evaluation, because there's a lot more design work that needs to be done to know whether the costs and savings will fit inside of a self-funding project. Yellow is what we think will fit in right now. So, we prioritize Stovall Shaw and West Oxford, because we know that there's substantial comfort concerns there right now.
One more sort of clarification. So, you'll notice that not all of our facilities are on this list. We did not include this campus, did we? Is that one here?
I think Mary Potter was included. Yeah, it's included. It's just, it's not down at the bottom, because it wasn't applicable on this specific slide.
Gotcha. And, of course, we have two schools on here that are going to be closed.
Yeah, and those were not included. Yep, absolutely. Really, the last thing I wanted to touch on here, well, there's two, two things. So, there are a number of boilers, chillers, rooftop units, air handler units. It would... chillers, rooftop units, air handler units. It would take a lot of time to go through all of them. There's a number all across the district that are at the end of their useful life and need to be replaced as soon as funding's available. And then lastly, there's an air conditioning system at Stovall Shaw Gymnasium that's currently down, and so we want to try and get that back up and running as well. So that's it on the mechanical side. The next slide really focuses on building envelope. What we want to recommend doing is making sure that we seal up the shell of the building. So we want to make sure that we're not spending money conditioning air and it's seeping out of doors that aren't weather stripped, or windows that aren't sealed properly. We also want to make sure that none of that outside humid air is seeping into the classroom. And so this entire energy conservation measure is making sure that we're doing that sealing of windows and doors. You've also got some gym louvers that are stuck open over there at Oxford Web. And then you've got a number of single-pane windows across the district that we would look at replacing, but that is one of those longer-term payback items that it would have to take the school district to prioritize and to get included in the project. Any other questions there? Okay. And then I've really just listed out the other energy conservation measures that we recommend looking into. The demand control ventilation is one specifically that we want to look at, where you guys are able to modulate outdoor air that's coming in. Because right now, there's always, especially in this part of the state, there's always a concern with humidity. We want to make sure we're not allowing humid air into the space. And so there's an opportunity to only be bringing in outdoor air when those spaces are being utilized. And so that'll help to drive savings, because you're not running equipment as much trying to condition that air, but also trying to mitigate humidity coming into the space. And then we're obviously going to do utility bill analysis, make sure that y'all aren't, that you're on the right rate, that you don't have any old meters on any campuses, that you're paying meter charges. We find that relatively frequently. And then some of the things down at the bottom, where, you know, are things that are worth investigating. Solar PV is something that, as of right now, in Duke territory, it doesn't make a whole lot of sense, but we are working with Duke to try and create some custom programs for our customers. So there could be an opportunity to get some solar to help offset your electric costs in the future. We also noted that you've got a number of schools that have piping that needs to be replaced for your HVAC systems that circulates throughout the school from the central plant. And it's one of those things, again, that there's really no savings associated with replacing piping, but we want to try and make sure that we are doing the project one time and getting it all done correctly the first go-around, as opposed to you guys having to continue a piecemeal project. So any questions on the scope that we're evaluating? I think one thing I wanted to note is, again, this is an early, high-level overview of what a project looks like. I'll talk about next steps here in a little bit as to how we narrow down focus on the scope of the project.
Um, what, I don't know anything about buildings much, except doors and windows. So what are sealed gym louvers at JF Web?
Yeah, so essentially, you have these air louvers that kind of look like big rows of metal. There's two of them that are on the side of the exterior wall on the gym. And right now, they're just, because you put in a new AC system, they were kind of abandoned in place. They're wide open, so they're letting in a ton of outdoor air. And so what happens is then your HVAC system has to work really hard to be able to condition that air, because you have way more air coming in that's not existingly conditioned. So something that will probably drive a good bit of savings there.
Okay, sounds good. Thank you.
Yep, great question.
No questions from the representative? And more questions?
All right. So the next part is the financial overview. So what I wanted to start off is showing you how you compared to our other school district customers over the last few years in the state of North Carolina. After we did the utility baseline, which this does not include water, I don't expect a huge water impact to the project, but just something to keep in mind, as other school districts do include water in their utility baseline. Y'all are spending about $1.35 per square foot. But what we really care about is energy use index. So that takes the rate, what you're paying for electricity and gas out, and just focuses on how much energy are we using per square foot. It allows us to standardize what you're using from electricity, natural gas, fuel oil. And you can see, you guys are at 58.6. So really, right in the middle of the school districts that we see in North Carolina. And so based off of our experience with these other districts, we see a projected annual savings of somewhere between 24% and 29% on an annual basis. And when you apply that to your $1.78 million baseline, we come up with $427,000 to $517,000 a year. And then the legislation allows you to go out to a 20-year guarantee. We see most of our folks go 15 to 20 years. And so you can see, that's anywhere from $6.4 million to $10.4 million in guaranteed savings that you're able to use upfront for capital investment. I went ahead and included the term length of all those school districts down there on the bottom, so that you can see, when we get to the end of the design process, most school districts start off saying, oh, we'd like to do a 15-year project. But when you sit down and you go, okay, well, they're willing to guarantee it out 20 years. We've got this chiller that needs to be replaced if we go an extra year, or we could address this 1960s electrical equipment. Everyone ends up going somewhere between 18 to 20 years. But it's totally up to the school district as to how long you all want to go out up to 20 years, which is the maximum in state legislation. So on the next slide, what I did was kind of broke out for you a financial overview of the capital stack for the project. So school boards that we work with, county commissioners that evaluate this project, sometimes get in the mindset of, well, do we spend the money to this project or do we not? Which is typical of pretty much every project that you do. In this case, it's more so, where do we spend our money over the next 15 to 20 years? Because right now, you're spending the money to do this project. It's just going to the utility company because you have inefficient equipment throughout your schools. This allows you to repurpose money that you're currently sending to the utility companies and use it to pay for the capital project retroactively. And so you can see, we're estimating, if you take that middle range from the last slide, estimated annual savings of $472,000 a year, that would go towards payment for the project. There's also other opportunities to drive funding in this type of program as well, over on the right side. So the first one is called 179D. That's a tax deduction that only for-profit entities can take. But we found a way to monetize it and pass it back to our customers. So that's an opportunity to help drive additional funding for this project. The second is O&amp;M savings. So you'll notice earlier, I said it's, we're guaranteeing utility savings and operation savings. And the reason for that is O&amp;M savings. So let's say, right now, y'all are spending $10,000 a year on light bulbs. Well, if every light bulb in the district is replaced with LED, that's a 10-year warranty, we can be pretty sure that you're not going to be buying light bulbs for the next 10 years, and we can use that $10,000 over the next 10 years as savings in the project cash flow. I did note that y'all are spending about $100,000 on roof patching right now on an annual basis. And so we could use that savings in our project to, if we were replacing some roofs in this program. R&amp;R funding. So a lot of school districts are now using R&amp;R funding because it's a state incentive inside of a performance contract and cash flow. And there's a huge advantage to that. So let's say you have $500,000 in R&amp;R funding that you're looking to do a project with. Any other project that you're tackling, that's going to get you $500,000 worth of work. But using it in a performance contract, let's say you spend that $500,000 on LED lights, and those lights drive another $700,000 in savings. Well, you're going to get another $700,000 worth of work done for that $500,000. So now you're getting $1.2 million worth of work done for your $500,000 R&amp;R funding. So it's really a way that folks are able to stretch dollars further. Oak Ridge National Laboratory actually just put a study out on this, talking about how it's the most efficient way to use your taxpayer dollars. And they see leveraging that money typically drive anywhere from 30% to 110% of additional scope for public sector entities.
Possibly I missed it. Could you tell me what R&amp;R is?
Yeah, repair and renovation funding, you get it from the state lottery funding.
And O&amp;M?
It's a separate line item from, outside of your normal operations and maintenance.
Thank you.
Yep.
I think, if I may, I'm sorry, I'm Eva, I'm the school system attorney. It might help to back up and explain kind of what is being proposed, which is essentially a financing contract. So the idea is that whichever company gets this contract, rather than, say, you doing $7 million of upgrades next year, and then your utility bills go down in the future, what they would propose is to do $7 million of upgrades that you pay back over 20 years. And so you are paying for it. The guarantee is that, they guarantee that you're, that you will save enough money to cover those payments. Now, as he said, they want to add together your utility savings, savings on equipment like light bulbs, things like that.
Good point. Yeah, and really, the only other one I wanted to call attention to is construction period savings. So typically, all of these projects will get installed, let's say, over the course of 15 months. But we try to get things like LED lighting done, let's say, in the first nine months. And so then you're going to have six months of LED lighting savings during the construction period that's not going towards repaying for the project, because your first payment doesn't happen until after all of construction's completed. And so that's immediate positive cash flow that you can see in your utility budget line item, that you can use for whatever it is that you want. It's not going towards repaying for the project. So when we had this meeting with the administration, they're like, hey, we've got some bathroom renovations. That funding would be perfect for. So there's lots of opportunities to drive additional funding through this program. So on the next slide, I just wanted to talk through a school district that had somewhat similar needs. Lexington City Schools, about an hour and a half west of here. They had a new administration that came on board. They've got three school districts in their county, and so they're having to split their county funds between a lot more school systems than you are, obviously, with the one county school system here. But they had a lot of HVAC deferred maintenance. And so they used this program to get five new boilers replaced, a new chiller, a new cooling tower, as well as some HVAC units over at their administration building. We did LED lighting district-wide. And one of the reasons that I like, not just talking about Lexington, but a lot of those school districts that I compared you all to earlier is, this was our first project that we did with them. But then when they got their S.R. funding, they came back to us and said, hey, Schneider was a great partner. You know, how can we continue to work together? And so they added on an additional, I think it was $3.5 million worth of work with Schneider Electric after we did this initial performance contract. So we did S.R. 2 and S.R. 3 projects with them. We've done some lottery-funded projects with them. So it's a testament that this delivery method works and also establishes that long-term partnership, because we do become experts on your facilities over the course of a four-month design period. And we've got a lot of projects that get designed up that don't end up fitting into the project and are really actionable as soon as you do have capital funding in the future. So just a good story there, and happy to talk through other school district references that we have across the state as well. And so looking at next steps, grateful that we have county commissioners here with us today and would kind of take their guidance in terms of next steps. So the first ask would be that the school board approves moving into the RFP phase of this project. As your board attorney mentioned, right, we have to compete against all the other firms that are certified in the state of North Carolina for this project. You have to go through the formal RFP process. It does take a little bit of time from your staff, and so that's why we asked that the school board supports the project. But we also ask that the county commissioners kind of informally at this stage, support the project as well. And that's because the county commissioners have one role in the process. They have to approve a resolution later on during the design period not to cut your utilities funding because of the savings from this project. And that's because you have to have your savings to make your payment after the case. So that's the county commissioners' role in the process and why we would ask for y'all to support the project before going into procurement, obviously. And I think we're open, district administration is open as well, as to next steps. Is it, if y'all are in support of the project informally, we, I think, would be happy to move straight into the RFP phase. Or if you'd like for the rest of the board to hear this presentation as well, we can do that and then move into the RFP phase, whatever you all think is best.
I think we have a board, we have a seven-year, we have a seven-year plan. So we would have to have a discussion among all of the...
Sounds good. So then, yeah, that's, that kind of fits in well with the expectation there is, you know, it may take another month or so. I'm sure it's budget season. So whenever we're able to get on the commissioner's agenda, you know, if we're able to get their informal support, then that's when you start the procurement process. That typically takes a couple months. You select a company to do the design phase of the project. That's your first real financial commitment, is the design phase of the project. Could take anywhere from five to seven months, and then you would move into the construction phase of the project. This is really collaborative. There's going to be many, many more meetings with you and your selected firm. And so happy to support as needed, getting you to the RFP phase, and then we'll have to take a step back. But really appreciate the time today, and then happy to take any more questions if they're out there.
And my question from the board members. This is information session, then we can ask questions. Mark, yes, Mr. May? Yes, please.
So understanding, you take the savings to pay on people?
Exactly right.
Please, so maybe $10 million worth of repair, restoration, come back and then call, so you would be a part of that, if you're no more than...
Correct, yep. And your payments are fixed for that 20 years? And so if you save more than that in any given year, that's yours to keep.
If you, the answer is a little offset, if you can not do the savings that we propose, you'll have to check under the...
That's right, yep. Every year has to stand on its own, yep.
If you have, in regards to different suppliers, you'd say, you know, putting up here concrete, pretty ready.
Yep, yep.
Does that include the design work, all of the work that, such as the Blackwell Road, South Granville High School, other parts of that design work and that's what they're there. So that would be a development part, what it puts the board...
That's a great question, yeah. So design phase is done upfront, so that's not included in the construction period. You know, there will be a little bit of like final engineering going on, but most of the design will happen during the design period. But yeah, let's say it's a 15-month construction term, and we don't get some boilers installed at the end of that 15 months. Well, there's a fixed payment, or a fixed date when your savings, year one begins. So let's say it's January 1st, 2027. If those boilers aren't in on January 1st, 2027, they're not accruing savings. And so then that means that we're on the hook for those savings until the boilers are in. And so...
And the additional cost, meaning the overall cost?
Exactly, yeah, yep.
So it's a double win.
Yep. Yeah, and it's a, this is a guaranteed maximum price contract, too. So like, if we get into construction and all of a sudden, there's tariffs, you know, that impact the cost of goods, well, we've already got a fixed pricing contract in place. And so we can't come back to the school board and say, hey, we need more funding, because the funding's already used to, it's the savings, right, for the project. So it's fixed long-term.
But if I may, before even the design phase starts, as he said, you have to go through a RFP, then you have to get approval from the local government commission, state energy office. So there are several steps before you could even start design.
Yeah, so, and the state energy office and local government commission, their approvals are before you go into construction, but not before design. But yeah.
And how long does that usually take?
It typically takes, if you're working with them collaboratively through the design process, it really only takes a month or a month and a half to get their approvals, yeah.
So the examples you have, I think it was part of that, seven, I like to say, seven million dollars. From the time you have a board that, if you can, just sort of...
Yeah. Yeah, so from the time they release their RFP to the time we started construction was nine months. So it can be done, it's a little bit more, you know, quick than what you're used to in the public sector, which is, I think, a benefit of the program, for sure.
Yes, please, Mr. May. Go ahead.
How much of the impact will you, students, do they respond?
Yeah, so what we do is, we build out that construction schedule in tandem with the administration. So most of like your heavy HVAC electrical is going to get done on breaks, summer break, weekends, that type of thing. Things like LED lighting, we typically will do second shift. So we'll come in at four, the crew will work till midnight, and then head out, yep.
Yes, Mr. May.
Does this include any, like, down the work in regards to safer schools, in regards to door, exterior door, things that, that also include that, if you're lenient or something, you're probably... enterize it somewhere, is that included?
It can be included, yeah, absolutely, absolutely.
Okay. Are there more questions from commissioners or board members?
I'm trying to remember, did we talk about you guys dealing with DPI at all?
Yeah, so if you use R&amp;R funding, that obviously has to go through the DPI, school planning review process, and so we would obviously manage that process and make sure to get through it before we start just turning into wrenches, yep.
You guys would manage?
We manage that, yeah, yeah, we manage that.
Which is huge for us.
Yeah, they oversee 117 school districts who are throwing projects and huge bond projects at them all the time.
Yes, I mean, just the human resources savings alone, having helped with that.
Can you help me remember, did you say what RFP is?
Request for Proposals.
Ms. Dubson, can you share with the board why we have to do an RFP and what that really, or, you know, what is that about?
Right, so, right, so that would be where, even though Schneider is the group that's making this proposal, you can't just hire Schneider, you have to put out a RFP for any, any firm that would do a guaranteed energy savings contract, which is a thing that there are several, and they would each give you a proposal. And so then you select the one you want to go with. So they would, it would be advertised for, I think, at least 15 days, it would, you know, we would receive these sealed proposals, and there'd be a formal process of reviewing them.
Did you say we have to have at least three?
I don't remember if you have to have at least three, but I don't think that you would struggle to get three.
Yeah, if you, if you don't have one, then you have to, or if you don't have two, you have to go back out, and then if you don't have, and then you can move forward. So it's, could add a little bit of time, and yeah, I think you guys likely get at least two responses for sure.
Sure, would you speak to how Schneider determines the savings from year to year? So after the project is done, we pay based on the savings, how is that determined?
Yeah, so there's a really specific protocol that we have to follow that the state energy office mandates called the International Performance Measurement and Verification Protocol. It's IP MVP. But anyway, so we have to follow that specific measurement and verification protocol, it's an international standard, and that's how we measure what the savings are on an annual basis. And y'all will have a login online to a tool called Resource Advisor, where we're uploading your utility bills monthly, and you can see before and after what that impacted the project has been. So it'll be really transparent throughout the year, and then we have an annual reconciliation at the end of every year.
Stuart, how do you cover inflationary costs?
Yeah, that's a great question there. So what we try to do, so there's two things. We try to build it in on the front end, so we know utility rates are going to go up long-term, right? And so a lot of times, what we try to do is we'll guarantee a small portion of escalation into your savings that allows you to get more work done. Typically, it's like a percent, maybe a percent and a quarter, not a huge risk to us to guarantee that savings long-term. However, what that does is it increases the bar for us that we have to achieve every year in savings. And so some of the checks are, pretty much all of the checks we've written in North Carolina have been kind of pre-COVID, when utility rates were stagnant for a really long time. But yeah, we factor in your actual utility rates each and every year to the savings, so it's incorporated into the project.
One more question. Since we're looking at consolidating schools, do you compare apples to apples? So if we're, we've closed a school, they're not included in that calculation?
Exactly right, yeah, yeah, yeah. So we're looking at the specific meters as opposed to your total school district utility control. Yep.
If there was schools outside of the natural gas line, would you build that, how would you look at running that if it was possible?
Yeah, so...
Whereas if the propane required, what would that be a big piece of size?
Yeah, yeah. So if, first, we've got to work with the utility, I guess, Enbridge is what they're called now, right? So we have to work with Enbridge and see what the opportunity is, because sometimes, I've got a prison down in the eastern part of the state, they're like, we'll run that natural gas line out there at no cost for you, because we want to pick up a new big customer. We've had that done at some other K-12 school districts. So we'll work with them, see if that's possible. If it's not, then we'll evaluate, does the propane thing make sense? Most of the time it does, because fuel oil is pretty expensive, it's also relatively messy, kind of tough from an O&amp;M perspective, and we lock the school district into the state contract too. So a lot of times they'll provide those tanks and piping up to a certain amount to the boiler room at no cost, because they're picking up a new customer as well.
Have any more questions?
Madam Chair, if I may, the operations committee previewed this information and made the recommendation at the time to kind of take the next step and bring it to the full board. Mr. Lewis has laid out some potential next steps. It certainly sounds like our commissioners, this is the first time that three of them are hearing this, and I heard there's an indication that maybe this might be shared with the full, your full board. But I just wanted to kind of gauge your reaction to this and hear some feedback about maybe where you stand and how you'd like to direct me and staff to proceed.
It sounded like a great idea, because we know that our schools are in dire need of a lot of boilers, things of nature that's costing us great money to try to prepare. But some of the schools in our area, it'll take a long time to get all those schools that's in need to. But this process, he will make it much quicker to get the things done. So if that's something possible, we can look forward to maybe taking on as part of our new way to take care of our schools in Grandville County. Yes?
Quick question. Have our system, Grandville County, reached out to various districts using this program in order to find out what their experience has been? No shun at all, sir, but I believe in checking things out. So has anyone, have you put together a committee to do that, or is that out of order ask?
I have reached out to Harnett County. I'm friends with their vice chair, Brad Abate, and he said that they've been very pleased thus far with the, with the communication and, I mean, the program itself.
Which system was that?
Harnett.
He's the vice chair of their board. I've spoken with the finance officer at Lexington. Absolutely. And, well, and, you know, new finance officer kind of came in in the process of this, so doesn't, she didn't have a lot of great information to share, so I'm reaching out to some other folks as well.
I was going to say, I think it might be wise if we did.
Oh, absolutely.
Yeah, okay.
I just wanted to mention also, having gone through this process so many times, when I was with federal government, we did RFPs all the time. Now, being that we'll probably go through this process, like he said, at least for two companies. So when we start doing the, you know, both companies, they go by the same guidelines as we would go out and check with companies that, you know, schools districts is already using and checking, you know, how things are going, how is it going with another company, or whatever the case might be, and, you know, those type things as you go through the process of evaluating and making a decision. But this sounds like a great plan here, but, you know, like he said, at least another company is going to come in and provide a plan. So at this point, we're still going through the competition, you know what I'm saying, we're going through the competition. It's not a selection at this point, but great presentation, and I know we're here at least one, one or two more.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any more concerns from the board members? Commissioner, do you want?
So our next step is to advertise? Is that where we are?
Potentially, yep. You could, you could have us do any number of things. You know, the timeline that was put on the, I think it's second to last page, is that right? You know, this is the, more or less the business case presentation, this, sorry, it's the last page, the very last page. Yep, it's up on the screen. Right now, we're under that sort of sub-bullet of getting support to move into procurement, which includes the RFP process.
Yes. Let me ask a question then.
Yes, ma'am.
So, yeah, we know we're going to go through the RFP process, but do we already know we're going to have at least one or two more companies to come in and do presentations? Because with an RFP, of course, unless we don't find anybody else that wants to compete, which is what this is, so this process right here, as far as, you know, moving to the procurement process, will come after we have any other presenters. And let me ask the innovation committee out, do we already have any other companies that's coming in?
No, ma'am, because we have not put this out yet.
Oh, you have not put this out?
We have not notified anyone that we are seeking this publicly.
Okay.
Yeah, this, Graham and I sort of began this conversation through introduction with other district leaders, and, you know, he's been very gracious in sharing all of this. Obviously, he wants our business. So this is his, his pitch, and if we were to move forward, we would then open it up formally and have others have an opportunity to present their case. But I guess what I'm asking today, it's hard to cut you off, is, are you all interested? Is this of interest enough to proceed? Or is this something that you're not interested in and we should table?
Well, let me just mention this, I know that West Oxford has been having to close down early. We definitely, we know how old our schools are. We very much know how old our schools are, and that, you know, we need to have this maintenance continued for the Grandville County Public School System. So definitely, I would think we would want to move forward.
Is that a motion?
I have a question before you...
On the radio, okay, go ahead.
So do we need to wait to see what the county commissioners say?
I'm not the chairman, but I think what we discussed is we would like to know the drawn up to this first. I think, in my opinion, if those go to the drawing board, if we discuss it, it's reported.
Well, we probably need to put in a motion for procurement to move forward with the study, and that way we can put things out, more companies come before us to see what they have off as well. That's the next step, to get support to move into procurement.
I make a motion that as the board, we move forward as, for this, you know, getting other companies to come in and whatever for this procurement, because I really feel we need to get a company to do things like this for us, for the school board.
I second.
I have a motion by Mrs. Allison, second by Mrs. Ross, that we move towards procurement for this new plan, to move, have our schools more safer when it comes to buildings and things of that nature here. Ready for the question, all opposed, eyes have it. In this closed session, thank you. I think we have...
Certified and classified personnel is presented.
Second.
Motion by approved certified personnel by Ms. Hayes, second by Ms. Baker, all favor.
Aye.
Aye.
All opposed, eyes have it.
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
Thank you.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye.